Can we begin the meeting with a pledge to the flag?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, Don, I didn't know you were having a couple of peanut butter.
Could I have a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from October 17th, 2024? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Proposed, carried. Tonight, we have a special presentation from the VBA to discuss sign law revisions. Go for it.
Yes.
Kevin?
Kevin Baker, zoning board, Fort Worth, Genesee Street. I assume, do we have copies of what we were working on? Did they get those, Bob?
We got them emailed to us.
Oh, the email ones, okay.
Yeah, they were with the agenda.
Okay, just go through them. You know, what we did is did kind of a full review of our sign code. We used the James Coon technical series, which is from the Department of State. Kind of read up with that to see what areas of concern we would have. I mean, we had some concerns going into reviewing this. We certainly found some things that were a little confusing that we wanted to try and clean up. So basically, we just kind of tweaked some of the wording. We added some definitions. There are some new codes that we are recommending, but we don't feel that they're really new restrictive items. It's just kind of tweaking a few things, allowing for some things that we have that maybe we aren't supposed to have now. And, you know, just, as I said, just kind of cleaning up, clearing up, and best practices.
Kevin, did you guys take into consideration the new LED sign, alt sign, the message signs coming up? Is that covered under another code?
Uh, I think that's covered under village board assay on those. I think.
Well, when the first ones with St. Mary's, and I think the Presbyterian Church, we interacted with them and asked them cooperatively not to have it on at late at night. And some of them, the colors and the rolling things.
And how they scroll, yeah.
So we just reached out to them. I don't know if.
We did not look.
It's becoming more and more prevalent.
We did not look at that. I believe any LED signs or neon signs village board is supposed to approve, take care of. But it's not our, not under our, you know, we could certainly. Talk about that?
Well, I was just curious.
No, no, we didn't do that.
Okay.
Section two and section three, I think we do have a typo in section two. It references the wrong, the wrong code section, but there's basically three definitions that we want to add. You know, we talked about banner signs, but we haven't defined what they are. So just kind of a simple definition. We tweaked the definition of a sign, and we wanted to tighten that up to make sure that anything that could possibly be used as a sign is under our definition of a sign. One of the things that I saw this winter, the snowplow drivers plumb driveways, they put up a stake to mark the driveway. So that's a stake to mark the driveway, but it has a phone number written on it. So I saw something like that. So is it a sign or is it not a sign? So we just tightened it up and we could address things. That has been an issue in the past for some of the other municipalities. So I think there was one, somebody had a large 20-foot rock next to their business, and they painted their sign on it. And their code said a sign is a structure. Well, the rock isn't a structure. So they were allowed to use that rock as their sign, and that wasn't necessarily intent. So we kind of tightened up that to just make sure we don't get caught on things like that.
Looking at banner sign. And thinking about some other mayors I've talked to and their concerns were with, they call it a feather sign. You know, the used car lot. Does that fit this? Or do you say a permanent frame and one or more edges, whatever?
Yeah, you're talking about the moving signs?
Yeah, it's like a, it's like a curve like this. It's almost like a flag, but it's a burp, it's like 10, 12 feet tall. And I think it'll be like that wide.
Yeah, I, yes, there's a kayak one. It's a, yeah. No, that probably.
Maybe it is banners, I don't know.
No, that would.
It does have a.
Sign lightweight fabric, similar material mounted to a polar building by a permanent frame and one or more edges. I think that would. I think that would cover that. Bob will make sure. Sorry, Don, yeah. Suspended sign, that's a new definition. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. We can move on to section four. We want to add a substitution clause. This is part of a best practices item which came up under the James Coon series. But the purpose of the substitution provision is to prevent any inadvertent favoring of commercial speech over non-commercial speech. Most of our code says you can have a sign that advertises the name of the business or has listed property for sale or has the architect that designed the park on it. It's pretty much all commercial speech. And we cannot regulate the content of the signs. We can regulate time, place, and manner, but we can't regulate the content. If we regulate the content, then we get into First Amendment issues. Kind of surprised that it's been there like that. So by adding that clause, it basically says where we say commercial speech, you can put any non-commercial speech in there. And then it makes it okay. We don't have to worry about our First Amendment issues. That's probably one of the more significant items in here, I think. It sort of came up a couple of years ago with sign. That's the important one. Next item, section five, severability clause. Basically, if, if a court says part of our code is wrong, it doesn't invalidate all of the code, just a part, that part of it. And that's another best practices item that it's good to have in there. Section six, we're just adding a little bit compliance about taking a sign down if it's wrong or if it's against the code. We really didn't have anything in there like that. So just kind of a way to it for us to enforce it a little bit. And if we go to sections seven, eight, nine, I'm going to lump those together. There's a lot of, there was a lot of confusion about processes for getting a sign and whether I go to the architectural review board, do I go here? Does the zoning officer do it? I mean, there was three different things, you know, three different areas, and they were all saying something different. So we're trying to kind of bring things into agreement, have more of a procedure of the steps that are to be taken and, you know, the cooperation amongst the planning board, zoning board, and architectural review. If we go to section 10, we tweaked the wording on that. We talked about a freestanding sign. The code, the old code was it's got to be 15 feet, but we didn't tell how to measure the 15 feet, whether it's top, middle, or bottom. So we just added how to measure the 15 feet. Section 11.
I'm just curious. That one says a sign shall not exceed 12 square feet and not be more than 15 feet high. So what would that be, eight inches by 15?
No, that's a freestanding sign, sign on a pole.
So you can put a 20 feet in here, it'll be 12, 12 square, but it'll keep it 20.
Yeah, but it'll be on a pole.
Oh, okay, so it's.
No more than 15 feet high for the bottom.
How high their physical sign is.
No, that's, that's under freestanding signs, so. Section 11, we're, here's where we're going to talk about 11 and 12, kind of the suspended signs. There was probably some code that got lumped together at one point. Think of the signs that are put on buildings. There was talk about having like a projecting sign and how far away from the building it can be. I think of a projecting sign as the old Seneca Federal Clock that's hung on the building, 90 degrees.
Or White Bakery, the, remember the cook?
Yeah, yeah. So we kind of wanted to break that out of that paragraph and define a little bit more about what a projecting sign is. And then we, under section 12, we are adding the suspended sign. And if you think of the sign that's held from a bracket, 90 degrees in the building with the sign hanging down. I think on a Oswego Street between Genesee and Elizabeth, there's a dozen of those signs. And the old code, they're not allowed. So we kind of looked at that and said, okay, there's a lot of those signs out there. They're probably very appropriate for a walkable village as you're walking down the sidewalk. You can read all the signs. So we kind of recommended a code that would fit what we have. And I think that kind of sums up. I don't know if we have questions or.
Exciting work, Kevin.
It's been a long one. Yes, the board, the board, you look at the board here. He did a fantastic job on this. And by the way, the suspended sign, one other thing, we were talking about insurance earlier. This also provides that if you've got a suspended sign over a public right of way, you've got to name the village as an additional insured in case, for example, it falls down on a passerby. Since it's on village property, it's the owner of the sign's responsibility.
Would our coats have the right to go and inspect them for?
We added that, that the suspended sign is subject to inspection and to be removed if deemed unsafe from code enforcement. We don't have it set up as a schedule or anything.
You can tell, though.
Do you have clearance of nine feet?
Nine feet is what we.
Does that get our snowplow under it? Because we're doing the commercial street.
Well, this will be over the sidewalk, not the street.
Right, but we do the sidewalk.
It should, it should, but I can double check, but.
That would be a thing to make sure.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, I basically went down with my ruler on the morning and said, okay, that one's 10 feet.
Well, they've been there through a couple of winters and probably made it okay so far.
It's surprising how many of them there are, and they're not allowed.
So we better pass this quickly.
Well, that was, well, that was the thinking, is that, you know, let's, let's not, you know, we think they're appropriate, and so let's just make it so it's okay for them to be there.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
All right. Thank you.
We have another presentation, this time from Matt Hunt with the Chamber.
Good evening.
In Mary Anne.
Oh, Matt, as well as Mary Anne.
Bonus Mary Anne.
Good evening, it's Mayor Board. We're here representing the Greater Bonzil Chamber of Commerce in the 2025 Beeville Big Chill. This is our.
I was afraid you were going to ask me that.
Seventeenth. Seventeenth through 18th.
It's a month.
This is my 10th, that's all I know. So the proposed date that we put forth is January 25th, 2025, Saturday, as we typically do, noon to about 3:00 PM at Mercer Park. Looking for waiver of open container law, assistance with the opening of the bathrooms and heating of the building.
Snow removal.
Snow removal is necessary.
If there's snow.
Yes, maybe, yes.
You weren't told that was part of the job.
No, no, I've been told that since.
Chuck used to do it himself by hand.
Another part of that is generally we request or receive half of the the usage fee for the park. I think that covers all the bases.
Hey, Matt, have you got a chance to get together with Tim?
I haven't yet.
I just want to make sure we avoid any potential.
Yeah, I looked it over. I know the tent company that had an issue recently is not the company we use. But what I did is I sent the code to the tent company we use and I asked them to tell me what they do to adhere to it. So I think that would help.
We just don't want to have January 24th problem.
Yeah, so I know the tenters are done, and we haven't had any mushrooms.
But I know that some of these codes change. The state code is coming down, and they get changed, and we don't even know what happens.
Sometimes when it's something little, you don't see it. But when you see something as egregious as we did see.
Right.
Then it brings everything else to light.
That's why I figure it's easier for, to send it over to the tent company, and then they can tell me what they do to make sure that that's appropriate.
Sounds good.
And then is the tent company, I, we were talking about it a little bit in our DPW meeting. In terms of like heating inside the tents, are they, do you do any heating or?
We have small heater units, yeah. They're, I don't know what the size is, but it's a small box essentially with propane.
Is it like an open flame or is just?
There's no flame, yeah.
In the heat, okay.
Yeah, it just blows.
So that might be something you just want to talk that over with Tim and make sure that's appropriate.
There's exhaust out to, out to tent.
Okay.
Chuck generally checks it out and helps set it up if need be. But yeah, talk to him.
And I agree, everything seems fine in the past years.
For the most part, the two of us have been doing this together for a long time. So it's, and all our vendors are generally the same vendors. So that helps with the, just kind of the way of heat and safety.
Do we need to act?
Timo, do we? Yes.
And yeah, we've already provided all the signed paperwork and required insurance.
Yeah, and the insurance has been approved, so.
Chief, you're okay with open container waiver for Mercer Park?
We've never had an issue down there in the 17 years or 16 previous years that this has occurred. It's a great event and wonderful for the community.
And Taren, are you okay with the hammer and chisel on the ice?
Just let me know, we'll be there.
We do generally have the state trooper dive team come for the day, so we'll, we'll make sure you're okay.
Ambulance standing by.
Yeah, we do have ambulants on site. There's not any approvals that we typically get, I don't believe. But that, after the event, that afternoon and evening will also be the.
Poker.
Poker run as well, yeah, so.
It might get a volunteer who lives over on that side of the city to drive the back of it to the river.
Or a city now?
Oh, it seems that way sometimes.
Do you traffic the San Francisco?
I did. I was trying to go to the subway across, and it took me 40 minutes to get to subway and back from my house, which is just on the road. That accident couldn't have occurred in a worse place.
But I think that's everything.
Well, I have two things, but I don't know if you want me to wait to the end under public, the public comments?
Citizen's comments is next.
No, they're at the end now. They're real quick.
Are they on agenda items?
No. That's why I'm asking.
Bruce, you're the question.
Well, I think we should wait.
Okay, that's cool.
If you blurt it out, what am I going to do?
So are we adding those items to the agenda?
The sign law is on the agenda.
No, the waiver of the open container and the reduction of the fee.
Yes. All 102.
Sure.
Are there any citizens who would like to address anything on the agenda? And if you do, could you come forward and tell us which item you're addressing and share your comments? If not, we will move on to department heads. No, trustees, you should have to address.
We're going to start with Don. Eric looks like he's ready.
All right, well, I'm just going to pass it right on to Nate.
Okay. I'll stick to the agenda line.
I just wanted to mention about our tree lighting parade of lights on November 30th, the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And everything starts at 5:30 sharp. And then there'll be an after-party at the library for the kids to meet Santa Claus.
And will you have, we have another meeting when you can thank the donors.
Yes, I will do that next meeting.
Thank you.
I will just stick to the agenda.
Is that a quick question? I probably shouldn't answer this now, but we've got a line for citizens' comments, which are agenda items only, but then it looks like we've got a new thing, public comments at the end of the meeting?
Yes, for whatever.
I do read emails, but I didn't see that. Must have missed it. Like I said, I probably should have waited to ask that question later. Okay.
Anything else you'd like to?
No, that's it.
Okay, Eric?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, I brought that up. I just wanted to make sure people had a chance to discuss other things that weren't part of the agenda. So happy to see you add that so people could discuss other things as well.
The reasoning behind this is that this is a business meeting, and it's become harder and harder to get to our business in a relatively quick time. Mayor's comments, I guess is next. I want.
Uh-oh.
Visual aids. I've noticed a lot of people out, it's really neat, walking, running, cycling. And now the times changed, it's dark. By 4:30, the light's not very good. So all I want to do is tell people, be seen and be safe. If you don't have some crazy stuff like this, which my house is full of, you can also carry a little flashlight, which I don't know how to turn on, where you can just get cars' attention, not to blind them, but just to get, so people see you.
Can we see the light on the back of it too? Back of your head?
No, the battery's dead. He's referencing this. I used to run at a taillight with us. I don't run anymore. Okay.
But there is a reflector on the back.
There's a reflector, yes. Some people still choose to walk, in some places, we don't have sidewalks, but some people still choose to be in the street. And I'm telling you, it's, it's hard to see people at 5 o'clock this time of year. This is the darkest time of year. Once we get snow and we have reflected light, it'll be better. But right now, make sure people can see you, and you'll be safe.
Let me fix his jacket.
Fix my jacket? No more visual aids. The other thing I wanted to mention, I was surprised no one else mentioned it, the leaf season. Our DPW guys have been hauling truckload after truckload of leaves. And as I drove to village board meeting tonight, they've been replaced along the street. The new crap is there. So I'm just urging people, get your leaves out, because sooner or later, winter will come. And then they're going to get plowed back into your yard until next spring. Please don't put them in the street. Make a reminder.
I was just going to say that.
Veterans Day coming up, want to thank everyone who served our country. Please respect it and thank anybody that you see for their service. And I don't think I need to say anything about, I was going to mention election signs. If they're still up, please take them down, but I didn't notice any.
I saw, still saw a couple as of yesterday, but our coach guy mentioned to me earlier that tomorrow is the last day, so he'll be out grabbing them beyond that, then.
To me, there's two reasons for getting them. One, the visual effect. The other thing is our country needs to move forward in the healing process. And whichever side, somebody supported, a sign of the other side can be an irritation. And it just, we don't need to rub salt in the wounds. Other than that, I'm going to stick to the agenda, move on to our attorney.
I'll stick with the agenda.
I would just like to tell everybody that anybody that's in the village, water bills are due by November 25th. If we do not receive them by November 25th, then they will be levied onto your March taxes. So November 25th for that. And then I have some items from Canton Woods. They are still taking names for the rescue mission for Christmas dinners. I believe it's till November 26th for the Christmas dinners. They're going to be having a birthday party on November 18th for anybody that's 85 and above. So please call them and sign up prior to the party. There's going to be their craft show on November 22nd and 23rd from 10:00 AM to 3:00. And also, they will be having their Thanksgiving party on November 25th with music at 11:00 and then a small gathering at 1:00 PM. That'll be it.
Anybody that has turned 85 or will be turning 85?
We're doing our 85 and above birthday party, so there you go. So, and that'll be all.
You've got a couple of years.
Frank O'Donnell will be there. He's already gathered on his calendar. Got to leave my mother.
Does he need a ride?
No, he doesn't, because she's eight. No, he doesn't need a ride.
So now we have a birthday party.
All right. Moving on to recordings.
There's a couple of agenda items on there for, for the financial side of things. One thing I would tell you is item D, I thought it was going to be straightforward that we just choose that Tuesday, December 6th or December 10th for a work meeting. But I think trustee Ryan Engel has a conflict on that night, so I just want to make sure you understand that before you just pass it and put up that date.
The only way to explain is?
You have whatever discussion you need to have. And then, as I always remind you, the budget modifications are item J, and I'm available for any questions about those. That's it.
Okay, Taren, we're moving on to DPW.
I just want to say, new guy, so first time cruiser out, picking up leaves, brush. And they'll be doing that till probably Thanksgiving. We did secure a Christmas tree. The Shannon family on Nine Division Street donated a very beautiful fir tree to us, and we will be putting that up on the 19th for the holiday celebration. And.
Well, welcome. Moving on to the police chief.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple items first, we're well into our planning phase. We met with the Quanis Club on Monday for the Turkey Trot, obviously on Thanksgiving Day. If you live along that route, just as a reminder, it's going to be going on. I've been here for 30, in my 38th year, and it's gone on every year. So that I've been here, the roots changed.
Not the same root.
Not the same root, it's changed. But, you know, they are expecting over 1,500 participants again this year, which is great. And to see all those runners come down Weston Night Street, it's really an impressive thing. Met with Taren earlier this week to talk about the DPW's role in both that. And then two days later, after that, Saturday after Thanksgiving, the parade of lights event. Again, working diligently, Mike Lockwood, our lieutenant, is working hard on the operational plans there to shore those up and to ensure that both events are going to go off as smoothly as possible. Especially the parade of lights, that event has grown substantially every year. It really puts a strain on public safety aspect. I'll be reaching out, I've already spoken to the chief from the sheriff's office. I'll be talking to representatives of state police to assist as well. As well, no staffing and things is difficult for everybody, but we'll have as many assistance as we can.
Is there any limitation, is the fire department of the district restricting? Do they have like how many vehicles they'll put in there? Or could this thing eventually go on for two days?
I, I'm not sure there's an actual hard cap number. The lieutenant could probably answer that question better than I can.
But as you mentioned, it's grown, right?
Yeah, no, and what else has grown is the people that come into the community to view the parade. That's, that is also grown. I don't see it firsthand because I'm on the command post, but anecdotally, what's told to me by our staff is influx of people in, especially if the weather's good, that everyone seems to come out and really enjoy the event, which is great. the event, which is great, but it presents some real logistical issues when we're closing roads and dealing with, you know, our main routes right at our four corners for the length of time we are.
Does, does the fire company work with the lieutenant on establishing the route? Like if they want, if there were any interest in changing it at all, would they work with you guys? I hope.
You know, yeah, I mean, that's the route that's been established, and that's what we work with now. If there's a change to it, we'll certainly work around any changes that there might be in the future. I wouldn't advocate for lengthening it, just to be very direct and honest with you, Mayor. Yeah, I would not advocate for that, so.
And then closes the, right, the center of the village is closed.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and Taryn's crew, then I know in the past, Lysander and Van Buren have assisted, because we do put up the large plow trucks, because we've got so many people right in our four corners there, so those trucks would block any traffic that would get past barriers that we might have already put up with people and things. Again, just trying to do our best to keep everyone safe during that. And then we've got the tree lighting right after that, and then even over at the library, so there's a lot happening in that two to three hour time period. And then, the last thing, Mayor, is just as a reminder to everyone, the overnight parking ban is going to start soon. You can't park on village streets overnight. I understand that the last few years, it has not snowed as early as it has in, you know, maybe years past, but that, that regulation is in the village code, just to simply allow our DPW team members to keep our streets plowed, so that way, if there's emergency vehicles, they can get through there. And oftentimes, Taryn's crew will come in at 3:00 in the morning, and that way, when people leave for work at 6:00 or 7:00, the roads are plowed, and if we've got vehicles parked on the street, then they can't get their job done adequately and things. So, we'll be certainly this time period, and once it goes into effect, putting warning tickets on vehicles to ensure that people are aware of it, and trying to educate the public again. But once the snow starts flying, we're gonna be issuing parking tickets there, and that's really not what we wanted to do. That's not on purpose, but it's just to gain compliance there.
I recall many years ago, when I purchased the house that I live in, that, I don't know if that was in place at that time, but you would hear the snowplow blow its air horn when a vehicle was in the way, and to wake people, sit there and to wake them up, wake me up, my car wasn't. This is an improvement.
I don't think they're doing that anymore.
I don't, I don't.
We're working.
Beer taken care of.
And in the past, you know, the DPW folks have gotten a hold of our team and said, hey, this car's been out, even though if we've ticketed it a couple times, we'll have our day shift people follow up with the registered owner and say, look, this can't be out there. You might be willing to pay the parking ticket, but this is getting to be an issue for us, and we're gonna do something else, which means we're gonna ticket it and tow it. So we don't wanna do that, and almost in all cases, we just gain compliance there. Other than that, unless there's questions now, that's all I have.
Anyone have questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Then, moving on to pepping business. Could I have a motion to... What do we do this?
Table.
Babe, thank you. I couldn't get the word. Could I have a motion to table item A?
I'll make a motion.
She already did.
Appreciate it.
It's okay.
I'll second. Okay. All in favor, or any discussion, or, okay. Item B, a motion approving a proposed local law to change a zoning district of property located at 48 Salina Street from its current designation of R1 residential zoning district to the B1 business zoning district. And this is what I was trying to remember to talk to you about, Bob.
Yeah, I have talked to the attorney for the owner, who is now the owner, and he's, he doesn't have a lot of zoning experience. He's in a firm where there's some people there that do, so I said I would get back to him on that, and then this idea of the restrictive covenant. So I spent a lot of time on the phone with him, going over the alternatives, which is either to rezone it as recreational, to create that zone with his zoning code, to ask them to go for a use variance, or to have, like I say, create a recreation district, which some municipalities have done in order to prompt people to come in with, whether it be pickleball courts or other things that are not municipal ones, but individual ones. So he's gonna get back to me.
Did you decide a PDD where we modify the acreage?
We could do a PDD. We'd have to modify our acreage requirements, which we could do, because there are requirements, we could modify them.
Okay, so we should table this also?
Yeah, and I just wait to get back. Like I say, they just want it done yesterday. They don't wanna spend a lot of time to go for use variance, so, and I have a little bit of concerns about having some sort of restrictive covenant that's a made-up thing that could come back, so.
And a use variance that would go with a deed?
Yes. But they don't wanna, they don't wanna spend the time or money to have, put together the evidence they would need for that, although I think it'd be pretty simple. Anyway, he's getting back to me, so we'll have to decide something to you by the next meeting.
Okay. Could we have a motion to table that?
Motion.
Trying to correct.
It's on my corner.
No, I...
Who was the second?
Wasn't me.
Nate made the motion. All in favor? Opposed, carried. Moving on to new business, could I have a motion approving the signed law revisions to section 268 of the village code?
This is a revision to our code, so what it really is, if you, if you want to approve the draft that we have and set it up for a public hearing, then the motion would be for a public hearing either our next meeting or the first meeting in December.
Okay.
I would make that motion to hold a public hearing based on the draft.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Presented.
Which?
For...
Can we get done at the next meeting? Because if we get into the budget stuff, I don't know if we want public hearings when we're in budget talks.
Okay, I don't think it's gonna take that long, though.
No, it won't. Okay, whenever.
Well, I got to publish. I'll, I'll publish the notice for the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So I made the motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
I'm in.
We've had our discussion.
It was a good one.
Okay, approved. Item B, motion approving the village justice annual audit for the year ending February 29, 2024, done by Linda Kabor. I think it's April. Who knows? CPA of Grossman Saint Armore, in authorizing the mayor to sign set audit.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Jody, will I see this thing?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
The I?
Yeah.
It was sent to us.
Yeah, was it? Okay.
Well, I'm glad you meant the S, the sign.
Yeah, I figure when, when I fly by.
They had one little minor critique, but it was not a showstopper.
Item C, motion to accept the resignation of information aide Kelly Batles, effective November 8, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Kelly is moving on to another job elsewhere. All in favor? Opposed, carried. Item D, motion to set a budget work session on Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, at 6:00 PM for the March 1st, 2025, February 28th, 2026, village budget.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second for discussion.
Yep.
Well, I mean, if that works for everybody, I can, I can make it work. It's just, it's a chorus concert night, that's all. The bigger. One of those family events. It's a family event, too. Family's important. But if that's a date for, works for everyone else, if nothing else will work, that's fine.
What time is it? Maybe you start about 3:00? 5:00, 6:00?
Uh, 6:00 is the...
Oh.
What about the next day?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think it's 7:00, actually, yeah.
What about the day before, the day after?
The day after is a Wednesday, and they have court.
Thursday's a board meeting.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be...
Thursday's?
12th is not a board meeting.
No.
No, it's not. So you could start earlier, too.
I thought you were at work.
I would rather take a half an hour off of work at 5:00 than have him miss the...
Yeah, absolutely.
So the 12th work?
Thursday.
I'm sorry, what?
Then with December 12th? Work instead of attend. It's a Thursday. Pull up your calendar.
Make sure the bills aren't planned today.
Did it don't with Thursday games?
The odds are not on a Thursday.
You're right, I gotta take a look, we'll call, we'll call this day, make sure.
I don't know my grandson's basketball schedule yet.
Cube's got a game at Bruce?
I don't put that in anymore. I don't have season tickets.
So the 12th?
Yeah.
What time?
6:00 PM or 5:30?
5?
5:00 PM, okay.
5. So you work at home?
5:15.
Oh.
5:30.
I have to only go on.
Well, what do we do?
What time?
What is it? 5:30?
I'll make it work.
She's gonna make 5:00 work?
I'll make it.
You make 5:00 work, okay.
Thank you. That actually works out, because S U does play that Tuesday, so you just get a stand for that.
Okay.
We're making all the right decisions, so I don't have to, look at us.
I'm making the decisions.
So, do we need a motion for a friendly amendment of the date?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so I will amend my motion to set the budget work session to Thursday, December 12th at 5:00 PM.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
I'm in.
Very good. Item E, motion to increase the via brick pavers, 4 inch by 8 inch, to $75 per brick.
Motion.
Second.
It's currently $50.
It's currently $50. The pavers have not changed their prices in 15 years, and we received a letter, so we're just going to bump it up $25, because they're bumping our pavers up to $50.
Cost of the brick is increasing.
And if people don't know, this is by, around the flagpole down along the canal wall, we have bricks surrounding the flagpole that you can have your loved one's memory enshrined, or...
Class 8.
Class of 88 or...
90.
Whatever. You can buy a brick.
Or your own name, if you want.
Or your own name, if you want.
Does it cost anything to move a brick that's yours somewhere that's different than where it is? It's a terrible spot. Don't get any sun. I gotta, I gotta, this is, probably should have done this off the record, but...
You have to talk to Taryn as to when his guys, when his guys are out there.
It's a terrible spot. It's all mossy and everything. It's nasty.
We'll set a fee of $100.
That $100 is well worth it. Drives me nuts.
I did have, I did have another dumb question. So you have three lines that you can write on, but it said a maximum of 14 characters. Is that 14 total characters, or is that 14 per line?
Per line.
It includes the spaces.
Yeah.
Works on Twitter.
So you could pull quite a bit out of brick.
Yeah. You could buy more than one brick.
And he can't.
I don't know, so.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Item F, motion to turn over the list of the 2024 unpaid water and sewer bills for the town of Lysander District in the amount of $14,253.28 to the town of Lysander for collection.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Set a normal amount that we turn over.
And it's a little bit more. Town of Lysander was a little bit more than last year, but it's, and Town of Amburin was almost spot on, so, yeah.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. Item G, motion to turn over the list of 2024 unpaid water sewer bills for the Maple Grove Water District in the amount of $3,856.10 to the town of Amburin for collection.
Motion.
Second.
I have another question.
Okay.
I'm just thinking, these are unpaid water bills. I know when I get my water bill, it's paid by the state, otherwise you're, you have a fee imposed. I'm, I assume that what we're turning over at least includes that...
Penalty?
Penalty for paying late. Do we...
And we penalize them again for the, for the levy.
Okay.
Yeah. And so we do that, we do these two in October, and then we do the November one at the end of November, and they, and there's penalties throughout the year, and then there's penalties for the levy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So these bills would have been due when?
These bills had to be due October 25th.
But it's not just the people who are on the current cycle. It's if somebody didn't, somebody has...
Somebody's in arrears.
Right. Paid their bill.
And they're in the Lysander Districts, and yes, that's right.
And it says water slash sewer. Do we have sewer customers?
I believe there is some.
Few.
Yeah. Yeah.
$287.
Okay.
Approximately.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. Item H, motion to approve Maureen Butler for temporary part-time hours in the village clerk's office at a rate of $20.87 per hour for a total of 16 hours per week.
Make a motion.
Second.
Do we think she has the appropriate qualifications?
Yeah, I'll do a second.
There's gonna be some checking involved.
Maybe the chief should do a background check.
It's gonna be lengthy.
Do we, oh, I guess we don't have a, an end date for it, because it'll be until you hire...
Until we hire somebody, but in the past 48 hours since I've posted the job, I've gotten 65 resumes so far, so...
There's been a lot of Facebook interest.
Yeah, so I'm hoping to start them, you know, next week or so.
Any other discussion? Everybody in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, carried. Item I, motion to add DPW superintendent Taryn Paschow as an authorized credit card user and issue a credit card for his use.
Make a motion.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm scared, really.
I was gonna say, Nate, what do you have to say about this?
Well, Nate lies.
I know, he does.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. Item J, motion to approve budget modifications as proposed in the document 2024-11-07, budget modifications for 2024-2025 budget. Can't get it out of my breath.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? Any, okay. All in favor? Opposed, carried. Item K, a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the affidavits of collection reconciliation, turning over the list of unpaid village taxes for the tax year 2024, 2025, in the amount of $57,511.03. Town of Amburin properties are $12,538.02. Town of Lysander properties are $44,973.01. Dona County for collection.
Motion.
Second.
Any question?
Yeah. Is this typical?
It's $400 more than last year.
So, no.
Any other questions? I already asked that.
I was ready for that.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. Now, item L, is the big chill, could I have a motion?
I would make a motion to waive the open container law, whatever, for Saturday, January 25th, from what time to what time?
Noon to 3:00.
I'd go to 4:00.
Noon to 4:00, just to be safe, in Mercer Park for the big chill event, and to reduce the... and to reduce the park usage fee to 50% for the chamber event.
I'll second.
Any questions for Matt, or any discussion? All in favor? All right, we do it. This is your 17, 18, whatever.
This is my last one.
Oh, does that mean it's in the future, you'll be jumping? Okay. Mary Ann, it's time for public comments.
Do we need to pay a security deposit as well for the park?
Yep.
Okay, so two checks, two checks.
Okay.
Yeah, you have. Just wanted to get, say thank you for participating in Trick or Treat.
Oh, it's fun.
It was a blast.
The library gave out 450 pieces of candy. So, we had at least at one time, 450 littles. So, yeah, it was a, it was a good afternoon, so thank you. And just wanted to let you know that, it's Thursday, next Wednesday, we are hosting a, and we, the chamber, are hosting a multi-chamber networking event, and we're having it at Fireside by the River. We have 150 people coming from all over the area, some coming from Watertown, if you can believe it, just for a big networking event, so very excited to bring attention to Fireside by the River. That's all.
Are there any other public comments?
I wanna wear my sign hat again, if I can.
Mr. Sign?
You, you asked about the LED signs. There is a definition that would cover LED signs. There's extensive regulations. As I'm reading through, I'm surprised how restrictive they are. I will point out a few things. Electronic message signs are prohibited in Baldwin Canal Square, Four Corners, East Genesee Street, business overlay districts, which kind of surprised me. And that would be any electric sign. Only allowed as freestanding signs, not as wall-projecting roof awning marquee or canopy signs. And they have to be off, shut them off at 9:00 and turn it back on at 6:00 in the morning. So, my quick read here, I, I think we are probably good there. When I said the, the electronic signs or the LED signs are on you, the zoning board has no jurisdiction for variance. They would have to come to the village board for a special use permit. So, that's kind of what I, my candid comment there, that, that we don't have any control over variances. So, if there was a size issue or something, they would have to come to the village board. But reading it, I, I think we're okay.
Okay.
And that's just my opinion.
We'll go with your opinion over ours.
Okay.
Who did that? I would like a motion to adjourn into an executive session, I think, that's next.
I'll second it.
I'll make the motion then.
What's the executive session?
Legal issue.
Legal issue, yeah.